...to order, please, drive protection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open the meeting up tonight's public hearing for the Highland Central School District, why, emergency response plan. So if anyone has any questions regarding the emergency response plan.
While we're waiting for any questions, can we just talk about why that's on the agenda? That there's a requirement, right?
Requirement.
Certainly. Once a year, we need to update our, not only our district level plan, which is a more general overview of what we do in an emergency in whatever building. It's been up on our website for over thirty days. Part of this as well, the Board of Education, that we do individual building level plans. So there's a plan for the elementary, the middle, and the high school. Those are much more specific with much more specific contact information for the emergency team members. Those are the things that, you know, it really states, if this happens in a building, then we follow this procedure, this procedure, this procedure. Those are confidential, however, because of course, we don't want everyone to know exactly what our procedures and our protocols are. So the Board of Education see those, see those, our administrators see those, but the public does not see those. That's a little interesting.
Is there any questions regarding, any questions from the board? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And I think it's now posted for thirty days.
It's been posted for thirty days, so we will later in the agenda.
Move toward adoption, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we close the public hearing. Now we'll open the meeting up to public comment. We're moving right along. Public comment. Okay, this is what everybody's waiting for, special presentation this evening. We have four of them, I believe. We have four special presentations this evening. The first one is our student of the month. And we'll have Joel come up to contribute our first student of the month.
Always love having a packed house, isn't it?
Yes.
So we are very excited to honor Gabriella Gemmell. So Gabby, why don't you come on up here? And I'm gonna read a statement about you. Gabby, come on up here. And I have a statement here from Mrs. Adamack, and then I'm gonna let your family have the statement. So Gabriella Gemmell is a kind, enthusiastic, dedicated, and overall outstanding student. She will always go out of her way to help others, her peers, her teachers, and anyone that may cross her path that comes in need. She always puts her best foot forward and never gives up, no matter what the task or challenge. She excels in band and music class. This is her second year playing the clarinet, and she also takes piano lessons. She always does her work with a smile on her face and brings joy to everyone around her. So that's from Mrs. Adamack. And then for me personally, I've known you since kindergarten, and I've watched you grow through the years, and you are always one of our right-hand students. When we need something, Gabby Gemmell to the rescue. So I want to thank you for everything that you've done. Picture Mr. Fear's gonna get his tag out and get up. And then over here, because this is the important one, this one goes on the website. Over by the screen. There we go.
Kai, do you wanna come up? Our student of the month of middle school is Kai Roper. And here's some comments from her teacher. From Ms. Harris, Kai is thoughtful, considerate, and helpful. She is always trying her best, thinks outside of the box, and is willing to try to figure out things in different ways. Something we're always asking our middle school students, think about it a different way. Kai, this is from Mr. Kariari. Kai is dynamic and thoughtful young woman who always provides intelligent and poignant insight to class. She has a wonderful ability to weave those insights with a terrific sense of humor and compassion. From Ms. Jansen, Kai Roper is an outstanding role model for her peers. She works hard, helps others, and approaches every challenge with a smile. From Mrs. DeJockemo, Kai is a wonderful person. She has great personality and a smile to light up the room. She's a model student, always ready to work, has her materials, participates, provides thoughtful responses. She is new to the district and has adapted so well. One of my favorite comments. She has style and is a confident person. I think that she represents the qualities that we look for in a student of recognition. And from Mrs. Geiger, Kai Roper is not only an excellent student, but a delightful young lady as well. She works hard to keep her grades up in class. Kai is very helpful to other students, encouraging them to work, to work together in a group to complete the tasks they're asked to do. I cannot say enough good things about this student. Certainly, she deserves student of the month. Congratulations.
Good evening. Unfortunately, the high school student of the month couldn't be with us today because he is, coincidentally, he is performing in a concert, and that's one of the reasons why I made him student of the month. But right now, he is at SUNY Ulster, he's part of the community Wind Ensemble, and he had a concert tonight. Originally, he thought it was a rehearsal that he was planning on going late to, but this morning he came to me, said, I'm sorry, I can't be there at a concert. I said, that's okay, I'll do it without you. So we'll get a picture of him tomorrow with Mr. Judge, myself, and Benjamin Vargas. So Benito, we called him. Highland High School Student of the Month for December 2019 is Senior Benito Vargas. Benito is currently taking five college classes, calculus, physics, French Five, economics, government, and composition two. According to Benito, his favorite class is currently French Five. His teacher's describing him as a critical thinker and an exceptional problem solver. Advanced placement U.S. history teacher, Mrs. Saylor insisted that I mention that Benito received a five out of five on his AP U.S. history exam that he took last year, and that's not an easy score to earn. In addition to academics, Benito also excels in athletics and music. He's been a member of our cross-country and outdoor track teams for the past four years. Benito recently won the Virtuoso in Progress Concerto competition with the Hudson Valley Philharmonic. As winner of this regional competition for high school and college-level musicians, he will perform as the featured soloist with the Hudson Valley Philharmonic in April 2020, performing the Ralph Von Williams Concerto for bass tuba. In addition, Benito is also performing with the New York Police Youth Symphony Orchestra, SUNY Ulster Wind Ensemble, which is where he is right now, and the Jazz Ensemble, SUNY Ulster Tuba Quartet, and he's the bass trombonist for the Hudson Valley Youth Jazz Orchestra. Over the summer, he participated in Boston Symphony Orchestra's prestigious Tanglewood Tuba Institute. This is one of the premier educational programs in the world for classical musicians. He was also selected to an unprecedented three NISMA All-State Ensembles, including the Symphony Orchestra, Symphonic Band, and Jazz Ensemble. Benito is currently preparing audition materials for some of the top music conservatories in the country. When I asked him about his musical instruments, he, Benito stated that he plays the tuba, the trombone, the euphonium, and he dabbles on the piano. Those are his words. Though his favorite is by far the tuba. Upon graduating high school, Benito plans to major in music, and his first choice is currently Carnegie Mellon. Regardless of where he eventually continues his education, we all know that Benito will be successful in his future endeavors. I wish, I say congratulations to Benito Vargas on being named Highland High School Student of the Month for December 2019. They said you don't want a picture, just me. We'll get a picture of you tomorrow. Thank you.
Congratulations again to all of our students of the month. You really are inspirational to the peers.
And on behalf of the entire Board of Education, to the student of the month, job well done. Congratulations.
My speech is, yeah, so I know it's a school night, so you might have homework to do. So now would be your time to scoot out if you'd like to.
Okay, our next presentation is our free and reduced meal program. Maria, part of you can see that presentation.
So another board has requested just a little more information about free and reduced, how it works, how people are eligible for. And certainly, we want to get that word out there because, you know, while we know that we have so many people on it, we want to encourage everyone who's eligible to partake in these programs.
So we put together a brief PowerPoint here, just an overview, and first, we'll calculate the expansion and the discussion, but. So the first category we have is direct certification. And this is a database that we access to the New York State Education website. And the only people that you will find on here are those families that are receiving SNAP benefits and Medicaid benefits. Any family on this list will automatically receive free meals. Just a note on the Medicaid, not all families receiving Medicaid will get free meals. Only the people on the list in this database under Medicaid will be able to access free meals. We do a download monthly. We're only mandated to do three a year, but we do it monthly so we can capture as many students as possible. Additional categories would be migrant students. We receive a list from an agency out in New York that deals with the migrant workers' families. So if we don't hear from them by mid-August, we reach out to them because we usually have a few students. We have the homeless and runaway category, and those students are given to us through the Homeless Liaison. And again, that's the only way we can say for sure that this is a student that should be classified as homeless or runaway. And then we have our foster students, and they come to us via the Ulster County Social Service Agency. And again, we're not allowed to just take that at face value. That comes on a letter head directly to us from that agency. And then we have income applications, and families will fill this out, though we'll be reporting their income and family size. This chart is provided to us through the Child Nutrition Agency each year. It changes a little bit. This is found in our free and reduced price eligibility policy information booklet. It's kinda like our Bible for the year. And this booklet is made available to each district by the end of June for the following year. As a last resort, we use administrative prerogative. And in my twenty-something years theory, I've seen it used once. And that's when an administrator would take over and fill out the application for our student or students. And this is usually when you have a family that has, you know, a special situation that they can't handle themselves. They still have to go through and verify that they spoke to the family, that they collect any kind of income information, and the family's size. So that would be a last, last resort. And there's two other categories that are really uncommon for our area. Those are the temporary assistance to needy families. You don't really see too much of that here. We usually just see the SNAP families. And then you have the food distribution program and union reservations, which you probably see more at state, not too much here. I've never seen one here. So some final thoughts for our district. At the end of November, we had thirty-six percent of our enrollment that qualified for the free and reduced meal program. And this figure is down from the thirty-nine point seven in October, only because October's kind of a transition month, where you have families that are still receiving their benefits from the prior year and having to reapply for this year. So some families choose not to reapply, some just don't make the cut for the, for the application. And I mean, Central School District does make every possible effort to ensure that all qualifying students receive the free and reduced benefits. And the support staff in each building, as well as food service staff, will try to promote the program to the best of their ability. And that ties nicely into the mission statement that students are a priority.
This, this was really interesting. I did not know that a list was available on New York State. I did not know that. I thought that you did this direct reach out to the students. The state and the last couple of years have really refined what they want us to do. And so they are making the New York State database available to us. So we have this wizard that works interfaces with our POS system. And each month, we call up the food service team over there at the RIC, and they help us match our students that are in our district with the state database. So if a family, if a family is on Medicaid, do they still have to fill out an application? So like if they're downloaded?
No, they do not. We're not allowed to take any applications with Medicaid numbers anymore. It has to come from the state database.
So, so then the child automatically qualifies?
Yes.
For free. And then the, the family can apply for free and reduced meals through reporting their income and family size. So if this, if there was a family with two children in the district, can you give me an idea of what, what is the income limit?
If you make over thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars for a family of two, you will not receive them.
So a family, two children?
Just two in the household, definitely.
Two in the household. Oh, so like a mom and a child.
Which is not a lot when you think of all the expenses to live in New York State.
It's not, it's not.
What, do you have the information for a family of four? Two parents, two kids, you know, what's the?
A family of four, you can make forty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year.
And that will qualify you for free or reduced?
Reduced. The free, the free schedule can only be shared one time, and that's when we send it to the newspaper, to the newspaper in August. Otherwise, we're not to share the free schedule. I could share it privately probably with you, but they don't promote the free salary schedule to the public. Just one time a year. So we're able to offer the reduced schedule with our parent PAC amount on our website if needed, but, well, our parent PAC is up there. So it's, it's in the policy booklet that we can only publicly share that one time a year, and that's if the newspapers decide to publish it. Well, that's the government. Make sense to you. We can, we've got one conversation.
Maria, on this, on this report, first time I've ever seen a runaway designation. Maybe I've overlooked it, I'm not sure. Never really have heard it talked about.
Yeah, we don't really get that per se from Elizabeth, who's our homeless liaison. It's usually homeless. But the, in the policy booklet, they group it together as homeless, runaway. So you could have a runaway, maybe living in a shelter.
Living in a shelter or some kind of family situation, other than what they ran away from, obviously.
They're included in the homeless number.
Right. That'd be reason for that. I'm sure somebody's looking into that and monitoring that over and above this.
Yeah, we get their name, and I'm sure Patrick gets the same list that we do.
Everybody's working in concert on that.
The next threshold is forty percent. Is that the one that we would, I don't know, you know, as far as the benefits that we'll get back from the state, but there's a threshold of forty percent. If we reach that mark, our state aid increases or money comes back towards for that.
I'm not sure about state aid, but what happens for food services is you're serving at least forty percent of your lunches to free and reduced students. You get a little bit of an increase in your breakfast reimbursement, which we do. You wanna serve sixty percent of your lunches to free and reduced to get severe need status for your lunch, to get a little bit more reimbursement there. Once you get up around sixty percent of your free students coming from the download, which we're not close to, that's when you can apply for CEP status, which is your earned advantage, that they're close easy to CEP.
Now, how does that threshold arrive at? Like, I know you had for the month of October thirty-nine point seven, and this month is thirty-six or thirty-seven. Is it an average across the year?
No, I, every month I take the number of meals that we served, and I did, that's not how many meals you served are free and reduced. That's just how many students are able to participate in our free and reduced. Just because they're on our rolls doesn't mean they're eating. So that's a misconception I think people have. That if you're on free and reduced, you're not coming every meal, and that's just not, not how it is. A lot of the kids still choose to bring their own food.
So when you had that reduction from October to November, because some applications and families were not reapplying or did not requalify, that's because their threshold, their income rose above that?
It could be that, yes. So what happens is last year's free and reduced students had twenty-one days, thirty days into the new school year, which yours was October twenty-first, to reapply. So up until October twenty-first, nobody really had to do anything to keep their status. So they're all sitting there, and then you have people from September and October, new people applying. So that's where you get like a bubble there.
So it should go back up a little?
It might go back up a little.
Is the application still difficult for the parents?
No, not at all.
So it's pretty easy?
Yes. And we always say, reach out to us. And, you know, sometimes an application that you're not familiar with looks harder than it is. But it really just looks for the names of the household members, the names of your students, your income, how you receive that income. You could have grandma living with you, they could be right there, if you know that name by household, if it's not hard at all.
And I know that we've had it various times, too. We've had our social workers, our psychologists, our support network. They've also reached out to families and offered to help if they need support and completing the application. So we really do try hard to include as many students as we can.
The, the foster students, do they report to you monthly for children?
No, your benefit is for the year. So if you get a free status, you're good for the year. If you win lottery tomorrow, you still get your free meals. It doesn't change. If you are reduced and something happens that you go the other way, that you need free status and you qualify for that, then of course, we would put you into the free status. And actually, New York State is footing the twenty-five cents for the reduced students. So they come through at no charge for them.
I'm sorry, I might have missed it. But what's the, what's the breakdown as far as the free versus any reduced?
Out of that thirty-six percent, I would say at least thirty-four is free. We don't have too many reduced students.
So majority of that thirty-six percent is high need.
Most of them are coming from the download.
Which could mean that there are parents, our families, that we're not reaching because it's not coming from the download. So these are, that other two percentage are people who have applied or are homeless or some of those other things.
So we try to, you know, we always have the application online. All the offices have the applications.
So with that download that you do every month, you're really looking to add more people, because we won't necessarily come off of that list.
Right, they never come off the list. And I shouldn't say that. If next year comes around and they, they're no longer, came in on the download, they'll get a letter saying your status is gonna expire on the twenty-first, please reapply.
A lot of times, it's an employment status change.
Yeah.
Any other question?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is a DASSA presentation.
Yes. So as part of our dignity for all students Act policy, in our policy manual, we are required to give a report to the Board of Education every year on, on DASSA. It's half a refresher on what DASSA is and what it means and looks like in our schools. And the other half is an update on the numbers of DASSA reports that we received in the last year. So this is fairly brief. I'm going to be part of it, but then I'm also going to invite Mrs. Connors and Mr. Judge to talk a little bit more specifically about their individual buildings. So just to start, the language of the dignity for all students Act. And keep in mind that this is New York State legislature. This is not federal. This is New York State. No student shall be subjected to harassment or bullying, and this includes cyberbullying, by employees or students on school property or out of school function. Nor shall any student be subjected to discrimination based on their actual or perceived. If we look at the next slide, there are named categories: race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practices, disability, sexual orientation, sex, gender, or other group. And, it's not, it's not lie, I guess I touched it. And, and the other is there because really, this is about perception of a student who might feel that they are being harassed because of whatever factor. It can be one of these named things, but just because I might have red hair and I feel like someone is harassing me because I'm red hair, but hair color isn't on this list, it doesn't mean that it's not bullying. All right? So that's where the other comes in. And really, in our district, many of the material incidences fall under that other category rather than through one of the named classes. Another thing to keep in mind is that this ties into federal legislation, Title IX, Title VII. Those are all different harassment legislations as well. So this all fits together. They really require a lot of the same protocols and procedures. Just a quick overview, the DASSA, is what we call the dignity for all students act in schools, is mainly preventative. The purpose of DASSA is not so much to catch people bullying, it's really trying to prevent it from happening, to make our schools a harassment-free place for students, a place that they feel safe, that they feel welcome. So the legislation is a lot about education across the board, rather than so much about individual incidents. However, we also deal with the individual incidents. So the, the DASSA legislation includes harassment that might be between two students or several students, but it also is between adults and students. It does not apply to two adults. That's other legislation. DASSA is specifically for students in schools. The protocol, there's a requirement for school employees, every, every school employee, that they know of an incident of bullying or harassment, whether a student tells them about it, whether they overhear it on the bus, however they might hear about it. They are required to report it verbally to a DASSA coordinator in each building, and then put it in writing within two days. And we have a special form that's on our website. It's also available in all of our main offices for reporting a DASSA incident. The DASSA coordinators in each building is the assistant principal, and then generally the support staff. So in the high school, it's Dr. Path and Mrs. Garcia. So, in the high school, it's Dr. Path and Mrs. Garcia. And Mr. Kenny, right? At the middle school, it is Mr. Kenny, again, Mrs. Jensen, as well as Ms. Connors. And then at the elementary school, it's Ms. Palmer and will soon be someone sitting in this room. And then I am the district staff coordinator. So, there are many places that a student or an adult can go to report an incident of bullying. Parents can also report bullying through either filling out the form or making a phone call to one of our offices. If they make the phone call, we as a district will fill out the sheet or we'll ask them to submit the sheet as well. So, they are required to report it. The language says a timely investigation happens. Generally speaking, that means the investigation happens within a day or two, depending on the complexity of the situation. You know, some of these can take a little bit longer, depending on how many students are involved, depending on where things are occurring, especially those that involve cyberbullying can really take several days because, you know, it's that peeling the onion thing. As you start to peel away layers, you find there's layers upon layers, and so it can take quite a while. At the end of the investigation, there is a requirement to share the results of their investigation with all the parties involved. Now, you do need to protect confidentiality. So, one party, say the accusers, won't necessarily know what the consequence may have been for the accused. If there was, that's very difficult for parents. You know, they want to know exactly what happened to that student. But again, that student, those parents have the right to confidentiality for their student's information. Usually what we talked about is, you know, we, we do the same thing if the situation was reversed. You wouldn't want your child's information to be out there. So, we try to protect confidentiality. And the consequences for a material incident range from education or counseling, and I would say probably ninety percent of our cases, that's what we're doing. A lot of work on recognizing what's bullying and what's not bullying, talking to the student who feels like they were harassed to help them understand the difference between intent and not, that's very difficult. But also having that conversation of, oh, well, I was just joking around. Well, that's okay, you might have been just joking around, except that the person receiving the joke might not have felt that it was so funny or was a joke. So, there's a lot of education around that. And especially as we move through the different age levels, you know, that's more and more the case. So, let's go to the elementary. I don't, you can just, I didn't realize it was that time. So, the elementary school, we really have a very few written reports of bullying, even though there's a lot of conversation about bullying at the elementary school level. There's so much education that's happening. And so, what Dr. Raca did, kind of one of her last things before she left, is she wanted to give you a visual of, of how we really implement DASSA in the building from a very wide, school-wide idea with PBIS down to our administrators and DASSA coordinators down at this level. Of course, at an elementary school, we're going to talk a lot about what it means to be kind, to be respectful, to be responsible, how that creates a safe environment for everyone. So, there's a lot of school-wide assemblies, and I know this is very tiny, but you can read on your presentation, PTA programming, bullybusters, puppet people. We have a lot of different programs that come in. You've seen Mrs. Candia talk about her second step program that she does, again, talking about responsible and kind behavior and how to respond to another person when you feel like you might be being bullied or harassed, what's appropriate, what's not. Of course, our social workers, school psychologists are doing a lot of individual work as well as group work with students, all about that social, emotional, how to get along, right? How to interact with one another so that we can all feel good about being in school. In each individual classroom, again, teachers are using their PBIS rules, their classroom rules, their own individual behavior management systems to reinforce that positive behavior. When it does finally get to the administrative or the DASSA coordinator level, we're following that protocol that I, I mentioned. This year so far, we have zero actually written reports. Last year, there were only two claims, both of those were unfounded, meaning they didn't rise to the definition of bullying. You know, again, at the elementary school level, it's establishing a pattern of bullying is, is not really something that, that happens. If we can nip things in the bud, if we're intervening very quickly, we can have the education, we can have the conversation about it, and it doesn't persist. Any questions on elementary school so far? All right, I'm going to hand it over to Megan to talk a little bit about what we do at the middle school.
So, from the middle school point of view, the personality of a DASSA form changes a little bit. And over time, we've realized that middle schoolers have a lot of freedom when it comes to what we consider a dignity form, and they use it as a weapon. So, they'll be in the cafeteria and saying, oh, I'm going to fill this out on you, not really understanding a lot of the intent behind this document that is a state document. So, we implemented something that Sarah's passing out to you right now, which is a Something's Wrong Report. These are in these blue folders that Sarah also has, and they are in every classroom and common space in the entire building. So, a student can fill out one of these forms if it has to do with bullying or any other issue that we, that they want to talk to someone or report about. They could have seen something happen, they could have had something happen to them, they could have been told something was going to happen, any of those things, they can fill out Something's Wrong Report from. From these, we look for patterns, behaviors, we can use this for data to see if there are certain things going on in the building that we want to focus at a grade level or a larger group of students, or at a building-wide initiative, or bringing in a certain speaker or someone to talk to, or talk to our students. These are all sent to the guidance office first, to Mr. Kenny or Mrs. Jensen. They speak to the student within twenty-four hours, usually sooner than that, but minimum twenty-four hours. And they go through the form. One of my favorite parts on the form is what do you want to happen? A lot of times, kids just want someone to talk to and vent to, or they just want to talk to the student but do it in a safe space. So, this gives them the opportunity to do that from the DASSA, or from the Something's Wrong Report. From this, we still do an investigation, and if we feel like it needs to go to a DASSA form, we can go right to a DASSA form with this as well. This also helps for repetitive incidents between students because we may need to do some mediation about behavior or perception or feelings, language, whatever it may be. We can do that from these forms much easier than having a, that like a form that we have to present to the state, which kind of skews some data when you're in a middle school situation.
Do you have, sorry, I'm going to interrupt. Do you have, do the students fill out the DASSA, if it gets to that level, do the students usually fill out the DASSA form, or do?
We kind of do both. We like having the student fill it out because it's really interesting when you see them fill out even just this form, it's very quick, it's a lot of check, you know, this is how I feel. But it's nice to see their perception. So, when we do have those educational conversations, we know where they're coming from, not where we want them to come from. And when we fill them out, sometimes you're like, oh, so is this what you meant? Versus, this is how they're feeling, and then when we, we have an investigation form that you don't get on the website, I don't think that part's on, is part we fill out, on that, that's where we write our, what we, what the student said to us, the accuser and the, the victim. So, that, that part is in our words, but from a middle school, I think it's important for them to tell us in their words how they're feeling.
Megan?
Yes.
Do you ever, um, feel that students might be intended being seen dropping off the form? Is there ever a perception like that, that?
Um, I don't, I don't know, because I think what happens is the sixth graders come in and they're super excited about them, so they watch a little bit of that like in every moment possible, for every little thing, which is great because then we know that we need to educate them more. We use the three terms and we talk about it all the time, is it mean, is it rude, is it bullying? And we constantly go through those things with students, and we have very clear posters and definitions of what each one of those things are. So that we, so when they come in and they're saying, because the key term is I'm being bullied, right? So, we say, okay, what does that look like to you? Okay, now let's look at this, and we literally pull out the sheet and we go over, you know, was it accidental? I don't know, okay, well, what does that look like? So, we kind of try to go through all those phases with them to kind of really figure out was, was it what they thought it was, which it may very clearly be, but I, I don't think they have a problem going to guidance, and that's kind of why we have them dropped off there. Because guidance isn't a, necessarily the tattle place or I'm getting in trouble place. It's where you go when you need help or you want to just talk to someone. So, it makes it a little bit easier when you're stepping into that place versus the main office. So, last year, age seven, DASSA-related incidents, the seven were founded, they were material incidents. And I think that's because we had the Something Wrong Reports to kind of back up the evidence when it got to that level versus investigating everything and a lot of them coming back, which in the past, it would have came back as unfounded, most of them, but these were legitimate material incidents.
Any questions?
No?
Great.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Great, so our life is a lot easier because the elementary, middle schools do such a good job at educating our students on what DASSA is, that they usually come to us very well aware, and they're like, we have to learn about it again. Yes, you have to learn about it again. So, we do some prevention. Every school year, we begin with class meetings, and during those class meetings, my fun part is on DASSA and discipline and things of that nature. So, they get it every year through that. However, one of the, the really powerful things that happens at the high school is kind of being in line with the PBIS model, which definitely helps with DASSA as well. We often have student-led assemblies with behavior expectations before events, whether it be large field trips, pep rallies, et cetera. Our student leaders, our upperclassmen host assemblies where sometimes we're just standing in the back, and they teach their peers or the younger students about what is expected and why, and essentially, if we want to be able to do stuff like this, this is the expectation. And it's not Judge or Zimmer who's going to be upset, we're going to be upset, you know? So, I think that that's an incredibly powerful tool when we have other students educating their peers and the underclassmen on the importance of treating people correctly. And I think because of that, we have some pretty good numbers. I've also done some professional development with the faculty on using common language so that hopefully from classroom to classroom, when incidences arise, our faculty is using the same verbiage to help reinforce the types of messages that we're trying to send. If there is a situation, a DASSA form is usually, usually completed. A lot of times, we don't wait to know whether or not it's DASSA-worthy. If there's an allegation made or a situation presents itself, we fill out the form first so that, to make sure that we follow all of the proper procedures. After a form is filled out, it usually goes to one of our DASSA coordinators, either Ms. Garcia, Dr. Path, or Mr. Kenny, based on who is available at that point in time, because we try to handle them as soon as they come in. So, it's really just what counselor is, is available. And then, I, as the, the lead DASSA coordinator for, for the building, I usually don't start the investigations unless no counselor is available, then I'll do it from beginning to, to end. But usually, I'm brought in on the process if it's something that might have police involvement, might lead to some sort of more severe consequence, like detention, ISS, and homeschool suspension, things of that nature. Or if the, the consequence for the intervention might need to be something outside of what we can offer in our building. So, one of the supports that we've used a lot that's been wonderful is Joe Akeem, who's the director of Positive Youth Development for OLSBOSIS. When our counseling staff feels that we have exhausted all of our options with, with a student, we go to Joe Akeem if we're still not seeing the results that, that we're hoping for in terms of education for, for those particular students. I run our building data every five weeks, and that's overall discipline, that's DASSA, that's attendance, it's tardies, it's everything. And so, I track it by every five weeks. Last year, it's kind of funny, when the numbers are, are so low, it makes for interesting percentages. So, at the end of first quarter last year, I was like, there's a four-hundred percent increase in DASSA violations, which was really like one additional. So, the, the percentages get a little bit skewed, but by the end of last year, we had nine reports, and four of those nine were verified material incidences. That's the other time that, that I'm brought in. At the end of the investigation, I wasn't the person doing it. No one person at the high school decides if it's a verified incident or not. It's always at least two, even if I'm the person that did it. So, if, we'll always go to another DASSA coordinator, review everything, and say, do you agree? Most of the time, we do, other times, there's debate, which is important to make sure that what we're doing is verified, valid, what's right for, for our students. And this year, we're a little bit behind where we were last year, which is a good thing so far, knock on wood. In terms of the types of harassment, the vast majority of ours always fall under other. It's very rare that they don't, but two of the ones that did dealt with religion and race. Consequences, it's usually education, but on ones that, that are repeated. Sometimes, it'll be ISS, OSS, it might lead to a schedule change, or a lot of times, just a safety pass works. And a safety pass is as simple as it's on business card, and on the back of it, it says, student, whoever has the right to leave any situation without question to report to the main office. If the student hands you this pass, please call us to let us know to expect that student's arrival, and it's dated and signed by me and never expires so that a student has a safe out of any situation to, to come and get help. It's a very, very calming intervention that we do at high school. Any questions for, as to DASSA?
I guess I have a general question for everyone. Being that, let's say that maybe five, ten years have gone by since this law was enacted, do you find, is it your opinion that this law is making a difference and relationships with students are better? Or it's hard to tell, or kids are going to be kids, or?
In my, in my opinion, I feel like it gives us a little more teeth because sometimes if the student really doesn't understand why what they did matters, we can say, but look, it's the law, it fits the definition. And, you know, occasionally, a student is doing the behavior because they see that behavior happen at home as well, and the parents don't necessarily recognize it. It gives us the teeth to say, this is not acceptable. And it's not my opinion, it's the law.
Yeah, that's the problem, you know, the homeless.
So, I think it provides a, a common process and a protocol for all of us to we're approaching it the same way, not only from building to building, but really district to district. The individual approach might be a little different, but the, the, the protocol and the process is the same. So, I think it's a. Also, I think, and I know that there are fewer, when I first got here as assistant principal, we had, we had forty a year, thirty or forty a year, um, DASSA forms a year, which maybe seven or eight or ten at most would be verified, but it was a lot more. So, I think over the years, students realized that it's really not a, it's not a, it's not a weapon. You don't use it to get back at someone, but we really wouldn't. Came around, they realized that what, what it's for. So, I think things have leveled off the past couple of years.
And at the high school, it's actually very rare that a student brings us a form filled out. They usually report an incident, and then we tell them it needs to be documented on the form, and we help them through the form. It's very, very rare that we just receive a form.
It also gives students a voice, which I think is wonderful, for them to start to identify their own emotions and, and how they're feeling. And I don't know that they felt valid in some of those. I don't even think they knew how to identify what some of those feelings were, which is a lot of what the middle school conversations and using certain terms are and saying, okay, I feel this way because, and being able to say, that makes me uncomfortable. And then what are we going to do about it? How are we going to change it? It's not necessarily the environment that has to change, it's how, how is the student going to manage themselves? Problem solve, work together and communicate, and all those things are wrapped under DASSA, which is super. And all those things are wrapped under DASSA, which is super.
I think my biggest, biggest takeaway from it is that preventative idea. I think there's so much more conversation now about, um, exactly what Megan was saying, exactly what Ryan was saying. We all talk about it all the time. And so students not only are more comfortable talking about their feelings or, or then more, have more facility with identifying their feelings, but adults as well. I think it, it gives adults the ability to, to step in and say, no, this is wrong because this law says it's wrong. Or, you know, not that they didn't do it before, but there's just more cognizance, more recognition that, no, kids will be kids, okay, but that doesn't mean that it's right for what they're doing. You know, and our, and our role as educators is to help them understand that that's not behavior that's going to make them successful later on, which kind of brings us me to the last slide as always. Um, with our, our district admission statement. You know, our job is to make them successful when they leave here. And such a huge part, and we're, we're seeing so much more research that's saying, being able to interact with one another is a huge, um, factor in, in your success as you leave here. You know, we, we want to talk, making connections and productive global citizens. That's also just a big part of that role. So, um, you know, it, it just fits so well with what we're trying to do. And I did want to mention, we, we do a lot of training, um, both in district as well as out of district. All of our DASSA coordinators go at least once a year to a training at Ulster Boses. But we also meet in, in, in individual buildings as well as, as a DASSA district-wide team, usually a couple of times a year to, to just to kind of calibrate, to make sure that we are all following the same protocols. That's part of where the something's wrong report came from, um, and, and having this discussion and, you, you know, what are the needs at each individual, um, building level? So it, it has definitely fostered discussion between buildings, um, for our administrators as well. Um, and just a side note, uh, we do have to report these, the verified incidents to State Ed once a year. It's through, it's not called radar anymore, I don't remember the, the title part, but we do have to let them know what they were, you know, what type of harassment was, what our intervention or our consequence was, as a result.
Something everybody would agree, having a preventative measure against bullying is amazing. Um, it's been known to cause mental, psychological, physical issues. But having a record that could follow, is there any action plan for someone who files a false report against somebody?
Yes, uh, that, that's part of the intervention, yeah, absolutely. And, and again, depends on the thing. If it's pretty low level, it's counseling and discussion. If it's something that has caused a major disruption to the lives of our administrators or the lives of their students, that's going to have a stronger consequence.
Time's of the essence in responding to any of these, but in place. So say we get on the back end of the week, Thursday, Friday, and we hear something. Uh, have we ever reached out to a family over a weekend or a student outside of school hours?
Absolutely, because.
On a Monday or Tuesday?
Um, like so many things, a lot of these don't come to light until, you know, 2:05 on Friday afternoon. Or, or because, and we didn't really talk about cyberbullying a lot. Um, that's probably what, seventy, no, probably eighty-five percent.
Or more.
Yeah, um, so a lot of those things are happening over the weekends.
That's my real fear, knowing that and oh, we should've done something.
We're getting notifications, um, and the interesting thing about social media is, social media does not stay in little pods, so there's definitely overlap between adults and students in social media, um, which is great for creating connections, but it also means that very often, if something's happening between students, there is a good chance there's an adult connected to the school in some way that can alert us of a situation. You know, depending on the nature of the situation, we may wait until Monday morning to deal with it, but at least we know Monday morning, we're gonna have to, you know, we're, we're getting them off the bus and we're starting the investigation then. If it's something that seems, um, life-threatening or, or harmful, unsafe for a student, yes, we jump on that. That's one of the great things about having such a, a nice relationship with our town, like police. Um, you know, they're very willing to help us out. And that's where a few meetings ago, we talked about the anonymous alerts program that we're going to be doing. Um, that will play a part in this as well, where students, and I think to answer, George, to address a little bit of your question, Sue, for those students who might not feel comfortable handing in a report, this anonymous alerts should give them the anonymous opportunity to, um, make us aware of situations. Because of course, you know, we want to think that this is, we're getting 100% of the situations all the time. We know that's not realistic. Um, so anything that we can do that will, will increase the numbers of students that we are helping and protecting and supporting, um, we're gonna try and use those. All right?
Yeah, just to, uh, quickly off of what, what your, your question was. Um, one of the reasons that I feel blessed to be here in Highland is that we have an administrative team that truly believes students are, are their priority. You know, and it was only probably a month ago that some of us drove back at six or six-thirty on a Friday night to spend our night here investigating a situation. Um, in other districts, it would be, no, it's Friday night, I'm already home, you know, whatever. Luckily, knock on wood, we don't seem to have that here in, in Highland, which makes it a wonderful place to, to work. Um, going off of your comment, um, one of the, the changes in the past two years to the DASSA law, which is interesting, is, um, the new law requires the district to hold on to any DASSA forms until the youngest person in the complaint turns either, is it thirty-two or thirty-six? So it's some obscure age in their thirties. Um, which means that those records will be here in district for a very, very, very long time. If, if it ever comes that there is a long drawn out, a more obscure pattern of behaviors.
Yeah, I, I guess I can understand it in today's times, I can understand it. What, what kind of, Tom just brought to mind something. Let's say you have a bunch of parents that are chatting, chatting back and forth on Facebook about the bullying that's going on in this town. How do you handle it?
Never happens.
Well, um, we handle it carefully, I'll say that. Um, you know, it, it really depends on the nature of what's being said. Certainly, people have freedom of speech, so we're not going to get too involved unless we think that a student is going to be harmed in some way, whether that's physically or socially, emotionally, whatever it might be. Um, you know, I'd say a lot of what happens is we see what the conversation is and then maybe we follow up with it, um, you know, the next day or the night. If there's someone we know that's involved in this conversation, we might be having a conversation with that adult. Um.
Like the DASSA coordinator might call that parent.
Yes.
And say, we heard or saw.
Yes, we've heard that there's.
Is there something I can help you with?
Yeah, yeah. Can you give me a little more information about that, or?
Okay, so it's not as if the adults just let it go?
No, no, and, and, um, for all of those out there. Again, social media is very connected, so, you know, people see everything.
Yeah, they do.
Um, you know, that, that can be to our benefit sometimes.
And, and I took, uh, I searched the schools web, the district website, you could find the DASSA page easy enough. All the information is there. And the, the parent complaint form is four pages, so that might be something that could be streamlined in the future.
We've kind of looked at that. Partly because of the requirements that you, you're supposed to have on the form. Um, that's one of the reasons, and we tried to make it as checkbox-friendly as we could so that they could at least go through it fairly quickly.
Check.
Um, but a lot of times too, we'll sit and even with a parent over the phone, okay, you know, this, 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 and write out the, um, description. That, that's the, that's really the key of the whole form is the description of exactly what happened. And my experience when we were working with high school students is they're not super thorough in, in their description of what happened. So they might write it once, but then we always have to sit down with them and go through it again and say, no, you know, she bullied me, is it a descriptive?
If the student one is this, the parent one's gotta be four pages?
Yeah, and part of the four pages is our, our stuff too.
It's not a lot of complaints per year as we can see, so I'm not, you know.
Right, but we also don't want that to be something that's preventing a parent from reporting either.
Right.
Right, so it's, it's a point well taken.
Right, if I gotta print it out.
Right. Any other question?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Doug, Miss Connors, and Cindy and Kelly.
Okay, our next special presentation is Special Olympics Question from our physics teacher, Mrs. Cooper.
So I had, uh, Mr. President and Board of Ed, uh, I had asked Mrs. Cooper to give this presentation. She had sent it to, uh, Central Office just to, to see it. So, you know, Mrs. Cooper, who teaches our physics class, has just done some amazing things with the students in the class. As you're probably aware, maybe where they do go, uh, to Big Lots and to Barnes and Noble. Um, each of those, I believe, two days a week. So really, every day, they're going somewhere. So at those stores, they're, they're learning real life skills so that they can, uh, get jobs. I know that one of our students did get a job at Barnes and Noble, at Target, uh, for the summer. So then, Mrs. Cooper started the equestrian, uh, team with the Special Olympics. Uh, she does have some extensive background in the field of equestrian and taking care of horses. Uh, I know that she did bring along some key members of her coaching staff also. So I did want to recognize because of all the things they have done for our students, uh, Mr. Nick Cooper and, uh, Coach, uh, Miss Ramon Hett. So thank you for everything you've done with our students.
Thank you.
They do, they always support and they come to offense with me and always help me to make sure we have extra hands on board. I put on the desk before you guys came in, the students all wanted to, to make a little present for you guys. So you each have a lucky horseshoe and they're each from a real horse. So it came off of one of the horses and everyone's horseshoe is unique. So the kids said that it's like them, so all of them are unique in their own way. So every single one of your horseshoes are unique and it'll bring you a little luck. We made as many as we could, so if you're missing one, we will get you one, though we're working on them. So they wanted to, to share those with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So we started at the end of last year, um, we started going to Hidden Hollow Farms, which is a therapeutic horse farm. And we do workplace learning at that site. So that's, uh, another one of our sites that we go to once a week, where the students go with myself and we do different job tasks. We learn about, um, you know, chores that you do in the barn, the parts of the horse, the parts of the tack. And they also ride. Um, I've been riding since I was five, so I am able to, to help them quite a bit with this. And doing the Special Olympics for the athletics part, I found out that there is an equestrian division for the New York Special Olympics. So we're actually the only team in the Hudson Valley that has, um, a riding equestrian Special Olympics team. So in October, the students and I competed, um, at, and it happened to be our farm. The Hidden Hollow Farms was the host for this year's competition. So the kids won, almost every single one of them. They got a gold and a silver medal, which we go just to have fun and enjoy, but it was amazing to, you know, for them all to, to do so well. So this is a picture of them holding up their ribbons, their medals. Normally horseshoes are ribbons, so that's why they're medals. And then we even, they had, um, they have Highland Husky Special Olympics riding shirts that the ATV donated and sponsored the money for us to, to be able to have, so they had some riding apparel. So this is talking, so it was about on October twenty-sixth is when we went and we competed. There's a horsemanship division, which is where the students lead the horse around. They have an obstacle with their figurines or to walk over ground holes, depending on their level. And then there's classes where they ride, again, depending on their individual needs. Um, you know, some are walking, some are trotting, some have me there supporting them. So we even bridged this over into our classroom, Mr. Bon Jovi. I don't know if you noticed, you're on our PowerPoint. So the, the students, we bridge it over what we do at our workplace learning and the riding into our classroom. So one of the really great things, um, about horseback riding, that it helps the students with their, their core strengths and their, their OT and, you know, all those kind of things. So we use medicine ball, so the kids wanted to teach Mr. Bon Jovi how to ride.
Yep.
So it was, it was great, so they showed him how to, you have to have your shoulders back, right? He did, and he had awesome. So it does increases their strength, their posture, their balance. Um, and throughout it, the students actually created this PowerPoint with me. So I wanted their vision and, um, perception of how things were. So on each slide, I have some of their quotes. So they said, those, they're talking about Mr. Bon Jovi, they said, he has great form, eyes up, heels bent and heels down, elbows bent and heels down. This was one of our shirts, you can see, uh, it has the horse and our Highland Husky on it. Um, and this shows, so the responsibilities that they have there, they have to, to water the horses, they have to hay, they help clean stalls, so they're, they're really, um, not just getting the benefit of riding, but they're understanding the responsibility that comes with having a horse and an animal and being able to, to form the connections with the animals. So there's more pictures of them here. Jasmine Rowe, I enjoy working at the farm because I feel independent. I'm able to work by myself without needing to ask for help. I feel special and unique when I'm around horses. So that's another really great thing, they, they, they can do these things independently. So it really helps them feel accomplished. And again, we have some more pictures of the different job roles that they have there. They even do some landscaping things, so we painted some fences. They have the opportunity to, to do some lawns and raking, so there's more jobs that are built into it. These are some of the horses that we ride there. So you can see the girls are with Baby is our, our main horse that we ride, which is the black quarter horse on the bottom. So Katie Rowe, being around horses makes me feel happy because I'm connected to the horse. I've also learned that each horse has their own personality. Every horse is different and special, just like us. The students also, they've learned, if you ask any of them, they can name the parts of the tack, so the stirrups, the girths, the bridle. So there's a lot of memorization in there and they've done a wonderful job about learning, um, all of that. So we work with horses all the way from miniature horses, which Tyler's with. So he's one of our tallest students and his favorite is the tallest horse in the farm. Um, and we, we go all the way up to draft horses. So again, there's, for each one of their individual needs, there's something there. So if the child is nervous, we've, you know, start with the, the little tiny ones where they can just walk or pet or, you know, just kind of be near them. So Tyler wanted to share that he feels fantastic when I'm around the horses. The horses make me feel confident and calm because they're very kind and calm. I was shy before, but now the horses have helped me to feel brave. So I just have some more on the slides and it talks about more of the therapeutic aspects of how riding helps them with their balance and, um, coordination and, um, improve their movement. So here's Jasmine riding Maple. And again, it's different, I won't go into detail with it, but it's the different motor skills and things that they work on while riding. So we have Jonah, we have Katie. And when we went to the horse show, it was really great to hear, um, a lot of the other competition teams were talking. They didn't know that I was with our guys and they're like, those kids really know how to ride. They're like, they're really great riders. And even the sensory, you know, you can see if you look at the picture, I think Jasmine's face tells it all just by seeing how happy she is with the horse and.
You know, I can connect with that brave part that the other student said, because I've been around these animals and I'm not used to it. And being around such a large animal, it's a little unnerving. Or when they make a sound, their big eyes are looking at you. So I can really appreciate. Maybe I should be out there farming.
We'll pick you up on the way.
You're told too, you know.
This is the time of year too, with the sleigh pulling and stuff.
We'll get you the mini, we'll bring him so you can start there, his eyes aren't so big. And this was the day of the horse show, so they were all lined up, they all have tack, they all have helmets, they have riding shoes. Mm-hmm, so, um, one of the things they said was riding together as a team helps us to better communicate with each other. We have more to talk about with each other. Riding is a very positive experience and we feel proud that we can. Riding together makes us feel closer. So it's also really helped with those social connection, connections for the students. So they feel, again, as a team, that team, um, spirit where they, they feel that they can do something that a lot of other people can't say that they've done. So it makes them feel very proud, you know, being around a fifteen hundred pound horse is, is quite a task for anybody. And they did, they all won gold medals, so here were some of their medals. We have Tyler, Jonah, Katie. And then the kids, they made me, I was like a prize. So they were, we're very thankful that Mrs. Cooper brought us to Hidden Hollow Farms and taught us to ride. If she hadn't taught us to ride, we would never have been able to be part of something so awesome. Horseback riding has changed our lives in such a great way. And this is a picture of all of us with our horse baby at the horse show.
Ever have any questions?
Where is the farm? Where, where is the farm?
Um, this one's in Red Hook, so it's a, there's really not that many therapeutic horse farms. All of the horses that are on the therapeutic horse farms, they've gone through, it's called bomb proof. All of the horses that are on the therapeutic horse farms, they've gone through, it's called bomb proof training. So they go through a special training, so they're used to if somebody's hanging on them or if you have, you know, crutches or any type of thing, the horses are, you could pretty much do anything around them and they just walk around. I actually, this past, I think over the summer, pretty much May-June, we bought two ourselves because we wanted to be able to bridge it over to our horse farm. So we just got to therapeutic horse farm, so that way the kids could even come and ride that themselves.
So you have a farm yourself or your family does?
I do, yes, yep. I've been riding since I was little and I competed, done the A circuit of horseback riding showing. And I honestly, I got back into it because of the kids, because they were always, they were like, you know, "We want to ride, you know, we love the animals." So I was able to bring my knowledge to help them and I did some research. And I had to become certified, so I became, through the Special Olympics, I took a course and I had to, you know, go and do a riding class to show them and then I was certified. And then that's how we were able to start the workplace learning at the farm. And then as they got better, better, then we moved to the show.
So where's your farm?
In Waltham, like Gardner, that area. It's just a private farm, but yeah, so.
I mean, this is an opportunity that anyone, you know, most people do not have, doesn't matter any age. So just the fact that Mrs. Cooper, they were the partners for the students, I think is just incredible.
While we're thinking, Mrs. Cooper. Is there a program where you're encouraging teachers to send supportive postcards and get them kids in supportive ways? Because I know they've received several postcards from Mrs. Cooper and it's just such a joy. Instead of hearing bad news, I'm several, I get the mail, I'm all over the bill, they write positive postcards.
We end each faculty meeting at the high school with each teacher a blank postcard. Or two if they wanted, and say, "Positive postcard," put something, pick a student and I'll mail it home. Just say something, be proud about.
I think we've received two very wonderful postcards from Mrs. Cooper and then encouraged him to reach the stars and do, you know, and make his life what he wants to make. And it's just very positive, very encouraging, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome. I love writing them, I thought it was an amazing, I'm always like trying to grab a whole stack from Bill, writing them.
Yeah, so you can have that one teach and she takes ten or four.
I do, I spend a lot of time with them too. I try to find quotes or things that really match the students or what I feel like they're going through at that time. So that way they get that mail and, you know, that smile, so I'm glad it's, we'll receive.
Anybody else?
Anywho, welcome.
Our board retreat, maybe we'll probably show it here.
We've got a mini.
I'll write that one.
If you go, I'll go.
And that's pretty scary.
I know you might have papers to grade.
Thank you and thank you for letting me come and share with you all.
Thank you, Coach Cooper. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, we'll move on, acceptance of reports. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation, Mr. Lieutenant, now to review and accepting the following reports that have been at this meeting. The Board of Ed meeting minutes, November 12th, 2019. Our Treasury Report, December 2019. And our Plainbillers Report. Have a motion, please, motion by Ed, seconded by Heather. Discussion?
October, not December.
So a motion by Ed, seconded by Heather, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So Carrie. Our principal's report, Joel?
Hello again. So I would like to just point out, the kindergarten parent workshop that was held in November, it wasn't heavily attended, but it also was not a great evening, the weather wasn't that great. But I'd like to just point out that that was run by Kristin Candia along with our BOSI's Behavior Intervention Specialist. So that was the first time that we've done something like that. So I think when we do more of those things, maybe our attendance will go up. I believe 35 parents had RSVP'd that they would be there that evening, but I think the weather prevented some of them from coming out that night. So we just, we really are getting great feedback about the work that the BOSI's team is doing for us. They work in our building once a week and now doing parent workshops, so it's a nice thing that's happening. I underlined and highlighted under my upcoming events, if you can listen, on December 16th at 8:00 AM, our select chorus will be on the Joe Daley Holiday Series as they were last year. So we'd like to hear our students on the radio, Monday, December 16th. Hopefully, it's not a two-hour delay or a day off, because I think that trumps the holiday series, but, so yeah, tune in for that. And then, I wasn't going to mention this tonight, I was going to wait until January, but Mr. Miller asked if I had clink bags. So I do. Clink, you're going to hear it again, here, and we're going to get started. The clink competition starts mid-January, so with the January board meeting, I'll bring you each a bag. If you can start collecting them now, so that we get extra funds in January. I know I have like five or six bags in my garage, my wife is ready to shoot me that my garage is filled with recyclables. But we're also collecting in the building, so I'll give you more information in the next board report in January. Any questions? Oh, stop-tober, we filled that cabinet. It got, it filled all the way to the top and then some. Oh, I didn't bring you the final number.
It was over 2,000.
It was over 2,000, like they far exceeded.
They make us stare and then just leave us hanging.
I'm so sorry. But actually, that was quite interesting. We, when we opened the cabinet, the socks all poured out, they were all over the lobby. With the third graders, they loved it, they were dividing them into colors and men's versus women's and girls and boys and... And so those are all now been donated out to the, to the community, different agencies that help get things to people in need, so.
It went beyond the highlighting, didn't it?
I think it had to, yeah, I mean, I think it was, I wish I had that number. Feel terrible it wasn't there, I think it was, it's in, it was tweeted. So it was over 2,000, we far exceeded. And I think I mentioned at the last board meeting that Honor Deli, he did a spectacular thing, he invited the entire class to the deli, they had lunch on him and they brought their thermometer, that was their gauge, they hung it in front of the store and, because he was one of the locations where people could drop the socks off. So just a shout out to him, he's a great guy and he did that for our kids, so thank you to Honor Deli.
I got it, 2,033.
There you go.
1,000 pairs went to Castle Point.
There you go, see that? I planted it in the audience tonight, just to... Merry Christmas, everyone.
An update on our Spanish teaching position, I did call Carly today, the posting closes tomorrow. We have no application for that position, unfortunately. It's, I have never experienced this, I wrote it in my report, I've never experienced not being able to fill a teaching position. It's certainly frustrating. I need to say clearly that the person we have in there is doing a really good job. She's not a certified Spanish teacher, but she's doing a really good job. But we continue to look and I think, Sarah, you told me, we even expanded the posting greatly.
We did this nationwide.
So that's where we are with that.
We'll continue to look.
We'll continue to look, that's all we can do. I do have calls in to two professors of City University of New York schools to see if they have any candidates graduating soon. I haven't heard back from them.
We were hoping that maybe the timing, there'd be students who are graduating in December, that would be available, but...
Other than that, nothing to add at this point, any questions?
Could you expand a little bit and not give it to full detail? I know you have a couple boards there in regards to student behavior, bus behavior. I mean, what level is that happening on? Is it serious offensive or just normal middle school?
There are normal middle school offenses that have increased beyond what we would expect to have at this point. So that indicates to us that we need to look at that and that, of course, we are going to do that as a staff yesterday at a faculty meeting and come up with possible solutions. That's what PBIS tells us to do. But of course, that was canceled, so we'll have that at the next opportunity.
True.
Anything else?
I have just a couple of brief additions to the High School Principal's report. On Monday, November 25th, Vietnam War veteran and author Richard Udine came to speak to Highland High School students about his experience, his before, during and after Vietnam. His experience is outlined in his memoir, 21 Months, 24 Days of Blue Collar Kid's Journey to Vietnam War and Back. He spoke to the students about his process of mindful decision-making, which helped him survive the war and which also helped him mitigate any PTSD that he had after the war. The students, who had been studying Tim O'Brien's classic novel, The Things They Carried, were moved by Udine's candor and compassion. Thank you to Emory Mizel for arranging his visit and thank you to Mr. Udine for sharing his experiences with our students. Now it was in our library last Monday in the midday. Also on Monday, November 25th, 10 communities, 10 families in the community who have Highland, High School and Middle School students, they received turkeys with all the trimmings for Thanksgiving provided by People's Place in Kingston. Thank you to Danielle Garcia, our Behavior Intervention Specialist, not only for organizing this, but also for going and picking up the turkeys and the trimmings in Kingston and hand-delivering to the families in their houses. So I'm happy to report that. And this Thursday night is our chorus concert, choral concert, grade 6 through 12. It will be in the auditorium here, there'll be a couple of guest singers. Mr. Judge, Mr. Zimmer and Coach Geller. We have to sing it along.
Yeah, you might want to come sing it.
Also, next Wednesday will be the instrumental concert and that's also grade 6 through 12. And as far as I know, aren't there any guests, instrumentalists? Is that Wednesday, it's Wednesday, right? Go by memory. Are there any questions? Thank you.
So we split the concerts, we knew, we recognized there was an issue that, especially at the elementary and the parade wasn't big enough ever and there was people standing, it was a very dangerous situation and not very comfortable. So we separated chorus and band concerts.
See how it goes this year.
See how it goes, it should be not very nice.
Just for the middle high school.
Sorry, for middle and high school.
It should cut down on transition time between the groups.
But at the elementary, we have a staggered schedule and I have it listed in the report. Right, so that, and it worked well last spring and next winter.
We did it in the winter also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our directors' report, we have, I think, pretty much all our directors here this evening. If you have any questions for the directors? The directors are doing a fine job. Thank you to all our directors. Okay, so go to personnel. Would you like to take personnel at a block from A through F with an addendum for our volunteer JD, Phil Basketball Coach?
Okay, want to recognize anyone?
We have some recognition, absolutely.
Motion?
Motion by Ed, seconded by Heather. Take our personnel at a block, no pullouts, correct? Take them at a block, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So Carrie.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, we do have three of the individuals who are being pointed that are here. So if they each could stand and then introduce themselves in what position or building they're in. So Stefano, we'll start with you, we'll do one of them.
My name's Stefano Federico, I am taking over the grounds to position for Annette's taking care of all three schools. And it's a pleasure, honestly.
Thank you very much.
No, you're good. Good evening, everybody, my name's Matt Arlen and I'll be the new AP at Highland Elementary School. I've been teaching in Newburgh for a number of years and I'm really excited to get, to delve into this work and work with the district's youngest elders. So it's clear that there's a lot of, a lot of good things going on and I hope to continue and build on that. Thank you.
My name's Christine Jean Grasso, I'm at the elementary school, monitor's position, I'm excited about it. I love the kids, I love education, I love Highland. Thank you for the opportunity.
Again, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we congratulate all those that were appointed this evening. And hopefully that, you know, you can make Highland your place to stay and make a career here. And that would be one of our goals, to kind of build from within and move you guys up the ladder. Appreciate it, congratulations and good luck.
Yes, thank you. I know you might have some snow to shovel tomorrow, so... Chris, I know you have an early Rotary meeting you have to get to, so... Matt, you got us.
One thing I wanted to mention, in our retirement of Bill Green, that took three breaths. We'll put in 20 years with our district.
She had just informed us today that she was going to be retiring, so it came as a shock to us, but we certainly thank her, wish her the very best.
Okay. Move on to our student rep, Bella, you're up.
Hi. So the past, the two half-days before Thanksgiving break, our eighth graders presented Human Impact Project presentations. And this is something I hadn't heard of, I had to kind of talk to my brother about it, it was really interesting. It's a great white project. Basically, the students were given topics that they had to research that have impacted the earth, impacted the population and kind of like they did research on it, they presented it to teachers, other students and so examples of these topics would be GMOs, space trash, industrialization, kind of like, you know, big topics that have impacted. In the high school, our Model UN Club, which I am a part of, went to a Bard Conference on Saturday the 16th where about 30 students represented different countries in trying to help solve different issues. I was on the crisis team for the 1967 Six-Day War Refugee Crisis. Model UN has been a great experience for me and I'm very happy to be the vice president of the club and be sharing it with the other students in the high school. The past weekend before break, the 22nd to the 23rd, five students, including myself, Min Tran, Benito Largas, Peter Bender and Sydney Druckman, attended the Area All-State Music Conference. So myself, Min and Benito were in the orchestra, Peter was in the band and Sydney was in the choir. This was my second year in this conference and I have to say, it's one of my favorite experiences. It's always really nice to be playing with students from other schools and in kind of more of an advanced group. And it was also my first time playing in an orchestra, which I have to say, I really enjoyed. This coming weekend is the Canada trip, which I will be on, so I will definitely report on that next month. But I'm really excited, I've never been to Canada before. I'm looking forward to, I don't know, are you going?
I'm wearing gloves and boots.
Yes, we'll be going to Quebec and Montreal, which is, which is really, really nice because in past years, you know, we've been alternating one year to Quebec and one year to Montreal. But this was Mr. Heath's kind of like final hurrah. Yes, he wanted to go to both, so he extended the trip a little bit and I'm really excited to go. Since the last meeting, we had two more of our Lunch and Learn the Leader series, which Mr. George has organized. The first one, I believe, mid-November, was the Importance of Networking from, co-presented from the Chamber of Commerce and State Farm. And the other one is... Um, and the other one is It's in Your Money by the, um, Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union. I was at both of these lunch and learns, and they were, again, very good, uh, real-world experience, learning more about, you know, making connections in the world, learning how to manage your money, all that kind of stuff. I have a lot of things, I'm sorry. The high school is hosting their annual holiday food drive from this week to, you know, it's about three weeks long, where, um, the students, you know, are encouraged to bring in non-perishable food items for people in the community who can't really afford to buy holiday meals. You know, we donate these to food pantries. And finally, let's see, what else do I have here? Oh, this Thursday, uh, December fifth, the Fed Challenge Club is hosting a Panera fundraiser. It would be very appreciated if you guys could all come out. Um, we, it is in the Panera in Poughkeepsie, and we're just raising money for our annual Fed Challenge trip to the city, which will be in March.
Are there special plans for that, or is it dinner time?
It's dinner time.
Do you get to show something, or?
Yes, there is a little poster. Um, I know it's kind of going around social media, hopefully you can get it out.
On social media, yeah, maybe you can tweet it.
Yeah, I know Miss Sellar has it.
I believe it's four PM to eight AM.
Yeah, so just go in and show that little thing and.
And it's the Panera by the mall, not the one by Adams.
There's no, you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the one by the mall.
Yeah, yeah.
By, uh, Colstone Freely, don't you think?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
They don't have any credit for Colstone Freely, go by Stone.
You can stop there afterwards.
You have to leverage this second one in.
Eat your Panera, save a little room, and then go to the concert.
And then do the regular, yeah.
And then go to the, and then go to the chorus concert. Or go to Panera afterwards. The order doesn't really matter.
There you go.
That's all.
Any questions for Bella? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, in the business and operations budget transfers. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approve the following budget transfers for two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number four-two-eight-nine for forty-eight thousand dollars, and budget transfer number four-two-two-seven for thirty-six thousand dollars. Have a motion please. Motion by Tom, second by Mike. Discussion? All those in favor? So carried. Sarah?
Um, since I spoke so much earlier, I'll only say a couple of things. Uh, we, as I mentioned in our last meeting, I have been meeting with each of our brand-new teachers this year. I, I finished up those meetings in November. It was really a great experience for me to be able to sit down with them one-on-one, find out how their year is going so far, answer any questions they have about how we do things, get ideas from them, for those that have taught other places before. It's really, you guys' experience, I really enjoy, uh, doing that. So I've now spoken with all of them, and I'll probably touch base again with them, um, in the spring. Just as a kind of follow-up. Not that I don't see them out and about, but it's nice to have that scheduled time, um, to focus on each other, really. Uh, and then the half-days on Monday and Tuesday last week, we had students in the morning, and then the afternoon, there are parent conferences, and, um, on Tuesday, teachers went home. But we had, um, the district's teaching assistants and aides were in the district both of those afternoons. So we provided professional development for them, um, both days. On Monday, uh, I worked with them on, um, well, a combination, really, of things. We had our behavior support team from Bosse's work with them, just answering questions about either specific student behaviors that they wanted pointers on, or, um, with specific students, or, or general situations that might occur, and, and how to de-escalate, or, you know, even how to get help, um, and interventions like that. We also, because it was a very seasonal kind of thing, and we were focusing on social, emotional, and wellness, um, we did a little session about the power of gratitude for your physical as well as emotional health. Uh, so that was a great, um, time for all of us to kind of be together and, and focus on the season. Uh, and then we also watched a video, um, that I've shared with the middle school staff, as well as our administrative team. Father Boyle, who was the founder of Homeboy Industries, he spoke at the NISX conference in September. And he really talks about creating circles of kinship and community and connection, um, and, and that was very well received. So that was Monday. And then Tuesday, Mr. Bon Jovi took over, and we, uh, again, focused a lot on wellness. So Mr. Cooper, who was here this evening, did a session on.
He did a session on fitness.
Yeah.
Uh, really kind of a Q and A about, uh, what to eat, how to exercise. And then we have another, uh, two presenters from, um, Tornow Wellness, uh, in Kingston, and they talked, which is a briefcase that I sat through, which was excellent. Again, just about, uh, wellness, mindfulness, um, nutrition. It was very well received, uh, by the groups who I continue to get compliment from, so they really did a great job.
Yeah, it was, I, I think it was a really nice couple of afternoons. Um, you know, and it's not a group of people that we often are able to get all together in one room. So even that, um, was good for them to be able to talk to one another, too. So, yeah, because it was a good way to lead into the Thanksgiving holiday. And then we're now just getting ready for our winter concerts and all the other fun activities this time of year.
Any questions for Sarah?
And the winter activities, the snowball, is that the schedule?
That's in my report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Steal someone under there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, uh, the, uh, the Highland Education Foundation is working hard. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, um, working on our annual snowball. So the snowball, uh, is scheduled for February twenty-second, Saturday, February twenty-second. Uh, we will be, last year, if you remember, we raffled, um, four tickets to see, um, Hamilton. Uh, that was about a one-thousand-dollar value. Uh, this year, we're gonna be raffling two season lawn passes to Bethel Woods, which is also a thousand-dollar value. So, uh, those raffles probably, whatever time, probably, like, right when we get back in January, we'll be selling those. And it's similar to last year, it'll be limited, probably about two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty tickets. And it was a great fundraiser. They've already started announcing some of the shows next year, I believe, Journey and Pretenders in September, Chicago, and Rick Springfield. I wanted to say Rick Springfield. And the Black Crowes, I know. So those are just three of the many concerts, and of course, the season lawn tickets are transmural. So if you win them, uh, anyone can use it. It's like, it's like an ID pass. So if you can't go to that concert, you can give it to a friend. It doesn't matter whose name is on it, they just show it, and so, uh, it's really, we think, a great prize that will attract a lot of people. We'll also be doing our second annual, uh, Hall of Fame induction at the snowball. So right now, the committee, the Hall of Fame committee, has accepted nominations. They are voting on the winners, and I'll be notifying those people next week. And then I'll make a public announcement at the January board meeting. So we'll probably be inducting, uh, two people for the, well, alumni Hall of Fame, and then one current or former staffer, or fellow Husky pride winner. No, we, this is something that's really in the infant stages, and it's, uh, it's more, it's a concept that I'm working on. Uh, I know we, we talked about, you know, Mr. Fair mentioned, we've been trying to increase things for, get our adults in, but the, the turnouts are consistently low, and this is kind of historical across most districts. So we're, uh, looking to pilot on a very small scale, an adult education program in the spring. And this was really, you know, I'd done things like this before, but it was really Mr. Mizel gave me the idea when we were on the middle school tour, and he said, hey, why don't we have a cooking class in this kitchen? So I reached out to some people, and so what I, what I'm gonna be doing is reaching.
You tend to instruct.
Yes. Reaching out to our faculty and staff first, and then certainly also the community, for people who have, are interested in teaching something. And this would be a self-sustaining program. There'd be no cost theoretically to the district, um, because the, you know, the hours would be, that's how much it would be. So if it, it was gonna be a four-hundred-dollar cost, so we need, you know, ten people, and it's gonna cost you four-eight dollars a person to do it. But then these would at least be programs that people would be interested in doing, and us not just kind of picking topics that no one really comes to. So I, I, I'm not gonna mention any names. I think I may have someone for cooking class, and that would be, you know, probably a week-long thing. Uh, but I'm thinking of things like wellness, fitness, yoga. I know someone in Ro, someone from Roary, I know would be interested if someone in Roary does Medicaid and Medicare counseling. That's all free service.
Yes.
That could be even just a one or two-night event, but he is very interested in working with anyone, uh, to counsel people on what plans to take. This is a free, oh. So, uh, that is my goal for this, because that's gonna take a little while to get organized, but, you know, I would love if I can get even a minimum of three different classes going in the spring, and to see how it goes. That's my goal. And then finally, you know, you, you may have heard it if you were home, so the, we did a Monday message tonight. Not specifically, actually, my wife asked me, don't forget to do your message. I said, yeah, no, 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 I cannot do my Monday message tonight, because the second day here, the phone ring. They will not listen to my message, and just presume that we're off tomorrow. So, no. So I waited till tonight, and it was, uh, about New Year's resolutions. So, um, I'll, the, the, in a nutshell, so everyone, most people, students and adults, you know, you get, you pick up resolution, but then you don't keep it. You know? Behavior specialists say it takes four weeks to establish a habit. You gotta do it every day, and if you do that every day for four weeks, it's now a habit, and you will, it will be liberating, like, to continue it. So my challenge is that you start your New Year's resolution now. So by this Friday, you pick a New Year's resolution, 'cause it's about four weeks away to New Year's. So then when New Year's Day comes, you already have an established habit of what you want to accomplish, while, while everyone else is just starting. So I, I announced my New Year's resolution. It's usually the same every year, but that's up my game as far as healthy eating and, uh, and my fitness levels. That is my New Year's resolution, and I've been speaking with some of those people that we brought in, how to do that. So I'm kind of researching it. So again, I try to inspire our students and our adults to, uh, with our Monday messages. That is all I have, Mr. President.
Any questions?
Maybe you could have a construction class, we also want to get.
Great.
Okay, the Board of Education, new business, just an FYI, Elsie County School Board Association meeting on December twelfth. Inter-municipal agreement. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approve the attached inter-municipal agreement between Antioa Central School District and Highland Central School District, which allows an Antioa student to practice, train, and compete with Highland Central School District Gymnastic Team. I've noted on the attached agreement. Can I have a motion please? Push ahead, second by Tom.
So we've done these agreements before, it's usually, this ends up, so we split the cost of the coach with the other district. That's related, in a nutshell, what that agreement is saying.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. District-wide emergency response plan be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approve the district-wide emergency response plan for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, presented to the board at this meeting. Motion please. Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Discussion?
One thing I didn't say, it'd be a public hearing part, is that, um, this is shared, and it does say it in the, um, in the document, but this is shared with State Ed, as well as, um, State Police, and the Town of Boyd Police. Yes. And then it's in each, well, the district one is available on the website. The building plans are shared with all of those organizations, as well as there's a copy in each building. As well as central.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Their old business, Board of Education District Policy, our second reading, just an FYI. You all know we have a policy committee now, a treaty, I believe, next meeting is.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. So they're doing sections at a time and bringing them back.
Yeah.
So, uh, Board of Education District Policy, our second reading, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approve the Board of Education District Policy Number Two-Two-Two-Zero-Two-Three-Four-One-Two-Three-Six-Zero-Two-Two-One-Zero-Two-Two-Eight-Zero-Seven-Four-Four-Zero, presented to the board at this meeting. And then motion please. Motion by Mike, second by Camille.
So the committee went through each of these policies, and I'm sure you had a chance to look at these. Most of them, they are just very minor additions, or we are changing a word or two. Uh, and the idea is to make sure the policy, that we are doing exactly what the policy is saying. And also really to kind of bring the policy, to update them a little bit to, you know, kind of the modern age on some of these policies. We will, but if anyone has any questions about any of the policies, certainly, uh, I don't need to go through each one of them, but I do have them all here.
I'm prepared to answer questions if the board has any. I mean, uh, again, a lot of these were just, um, uh, going back in time, taking a look at, is that the practice? If not, let's update the language. So if it is the practice, then it goes to legal to say, hey, does this all sound good? Uh, one question I have, Mr. Bon Jovi.
Yes, sir.
How come we don't have all the two thousand series here, and all the, did we do one thousand and two thousand? Like, I thought we were gonna adopt the whole series, not just the policies that needed updating. So they all have that two thousand and nineteen, twenty.
So in speaking with my, uh, confidential secretary, so we, we update, the ones that didn't need any changes, we, she simply updates.
Okay.
We don't need to re.
Like reviewed on.
They're reviewed on this date. We didn't, from past experience, we've never done that, if you want to, we can. But we, we didn't need to bring them all if they had no changes.
All right, so at the end of the notes, you'll see that that was reviewed on.
Yes. But that's all been added to those other ones.
Okay.
Revised on, boom. If there were no changes.
Okay. Only 'cause, like, these here, let me see if I can get to the top. Like, the top of this policy that's in front of us still says two thousand eight. I know the words have changed, but how come it doesn't say two thousand nineteen yet?
Okay, sure.
Because that's the, that's the origin.
That's the origin date. I mean, I don't know if that does, that's the initial adoption date, and then at the bottom. I'm not sure if we usually change.
We don't.
Past lives, I don't know if we change that.
See, if, if we're able to change that, get that two thousand right off of there. Yeah, I think you wanna see it updated.
Well, I'm looking at, uh, Mike, I'm looking at, uh, three-two-eight-zero. The initial, at the bottom, the initial adoption date was prior to July two thousand two. The top of that, uh, policy says two thousand two.
Right.
The only thing I don't see is, are, are these being reviewed by legal prior to?
And that was the other thing, is I don't.
Prior to our, our voting, or after we adopt?
No, prior to.
Prior to.
Okay, so they're not.
So some of them don't have the Waxman.
Right.
Reviewed by legal on, or reviewed by, it doesn't have our firm, like. Some of them are updated, others weren't. But I would really like to see, 'cause I think that two thousand twelve, I mean, I think that two thousand eight at the very top is misleading. Um, I'd love to see that be.
We don't see a value in that, that something which will have occurred in the past, we can say, well, this was, you know, if we're going back three years and say, you know, something happened in, uh, say there was an incident, would you say, well, it wasn't.
We wouldn't handle that, though legal would.
Right.
They would know all the documents.
I'll confer with legal whether they think that should be.
I think that that date up top is misleading. I'd like to see it as the date that the board adopted it or re-adopted. The notes can say whatever it wants at the end.
There could be a footnote saying as.
They're there.
You know, uh, reviewed, the review could. There could be a footnote saying, as, you know, reviewed, the review can be at the top, and then the footnote can say when it was originally adopted.
I just think that that, you know...
But you wanna kind of flip-flop?
Yeah, I think that would, that would create a...
The updated date, and at the bottom have the notes.
Yes.
Has originally adopted in two thousand and eight.
But I'm sure we can...
Again, I'm looking at the thirty-two eight, it reviewed by District Council David Cho, prior July sixth, two thousand four. Policy Committee, the same line, Policy Committee eleven-six-nineteen. Then at the bottom, there's another initial adoption, July two, then revised on six-fourteen-eleven.
Right.
So...
This doesn't even have the revised date on when the Policy Committee revised it.
It just says Policy Committee eleven-six-nineteen, not revised.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't say revised by.
Right.
So, I guess, maybe just put in revised, can we clean?
We're cleaning.
So you want it very clear about exactly what happened at each of those dates, was it revision, or was it just a review?
Reviewed by District Council on whatever date, or whatever date of the year.
And I would see even what's required, I mean, I don't see, look, I see a lot of policies across the valley, I don't see that whole running footnote thing on all those policies, so I'd be interested to know. Do we have to have it there, is it even important?
Sure.
I mean, going back in time, usually when we have a legal issue in front of us, legal handles that aspect of it. So anyway.
I guess the other question, is this a legal requirement to have those footnotes at the bottom, saying when it was reviewed, and was it reviewed by legal, and what date it could be?
Usually they just wanna know when the...
Just in case.
Okay.
Well, it'd definitely be good to have it uniform across everybody, to make sure it all looks the same.
The important thing is, the process is underway, and I thank Mr. Bon Jovi for...
Well, the team effort.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion by Mike, seconded by Timmy O., to accept, approve the second reading of those policies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything for the good and welfare of the district? All right, well, I mean, back up to the public comment.
Mary Ann Ingraham, did she the most of his daughter had her baby?
And what it announced.
Okay, before I offer a motion to adjourn, I just wanna wish, we're not being any gentle, January fourteenth, I believe it is. We have a long way off to learn, just wanna wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year.
You too.
Okay, motion to adjourn to go back into executive session for personnel issues and Superintendent's contact. Motion please, motion by Mike, seconded by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie. Thank you, everyone.